Everybody, please stand for the flag salute.
(bell)
(audience clapping)
(inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic of the States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Wednesday, November 7, 2018. The time is 8:20. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 14, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers is absent, excused. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petrako?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present except for Commissioner Rogers, he is absent, excused this evening.
Minutes?
Minutes for September 4, 2018, September 18, 2018, September 20, 2018, continued meeting, September 21, 2018, continued meeting, and October 2, 2018. Motion, please.
Move it. Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for minutes, Mayor.
Communications?
The Friends of Nutley Singers has submitted a letter requesting to hold an off-premise 50-50 cash raffle on Sunday, March 10, 2019, at 3:00 PM at their address on 300 Franklin Avenue.
Move it.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for communications.
Reports, I have various monthly progress reports from Public Works. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade tree report for the month of October.
Bills, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor Bill List for November 7, 2018. Public Affairs, $98,641.27. Revenue and Finance, $7,367,539.37. Public Safety, $77,656.79. Public Works, $83,841.27. Parks and Public Property, $631,682.44. Water Utility, $91,521.67. Total Payroll, $826,230.70. For a grand total of $9,177,113.51.
Move Bills?
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for Bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk?
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I know you put off the density ordinance for this evening, and that you wanted to review it. And I did have one question if it could be reviewed. It doesn't have to be answered this evening, it just came up. In page 3, paragraph H, it's section 1, it says, "The maximum density for a mixed-use building is 24 dwellings." I just wanted to find, what's a dwelling? Is that a bedroom or an apartment? That's, I just wanted to see if that could be clarified.
Further clarify that, it's one of the other, one of the questions that's come up, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, that's what I thought.
So further clarify what a dwelling unit is.
What a dwelling is, and when you say per acre, could, if that could be...
That's the one that says 1250 per acre?
Twenty-eight dwellings per acre.
Twenty-eight dwellings.
If we get to find what a dwelling is, and if you get to find per acre to say, a lot size, or, you know, what is the equivalent lot size, so you have some type of reference to it.
You mean square footage of an acre?
Not a square footage, but say 50 by 100 is one acre, whatever that is. I don't know what the number is precisely.
It's a square footage number, but we'll see if we can do it to clarify that.
Since you're going back to the engineers with it, that was when, I, that could be clarified, you probably still have a lot of questioning. And I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only?
Hello, Amy Salento, 70 Newman Avenue. So, I just heard from Mr. Moore that the public hearing on the proposed ordinance number 3397 is not happening this evening, is that correct?
It's actually going to be tabled indefinitely because we're going to come back and reintroduce it with more specifics. We had our, both planners, the planning board planner and our planner, on redevelopment, looking at the ordinance. There's a lot of conflicts with the existing ordinance, and the existing zones, and what's allowed on the setbacks. They also had some comments on the size of the unit, the 950 square foot for one bedroom as being a little too big. So there's some comments that our planners have had, that we want to incorporate and get it right, and come back and reintroduce it.
So, this, the proposed ordinance has been about 10 years in the making, according to the summary that a citizen put together and presented at the February...
That's not quite true, that the ordinance has been in, the ordinance has actually been in the last two years, that's it.
Okay, so, we're going to call it 24 months...
Twenty-four months, that's fair.
Approximately. And we have planners that we pay for, you're saying our planner and the planning board planner. Both of those planners are paid for by the township, is that correct?
They're paid for, they haven't been paid for on this project, which is another issue.
So they're working for free?
That's what I'm saying, they have to be, that's one of the issues that has to be resolved, too.
So is this a surprise? I mean, how was this not known before the ordinance was proposed?
It's not in their contract, it's not in their present contract.
So I'm saying, the ordinance was proposed on September 4. It came from the planning board...
Came from the planning board.
...to the Board of Commissioners.
Correct.
Supposedly, last year it was sent to all of you, but it never made it onto an agenda or a docket. So I'm asking, is this, is this a surprise, that two different planners hired by the township, one for the planning board and one for the Board of Commissioners? I'm not actually sure why we have two planners, but maybe that's a checks and balances issue, that we, that we need two different planners.
Well, one's our redevelopment, one's our redevelopment council planner, and the other is the planning board.
Okay. And you're saying, and they haven't been paid to work on this project, so in the last two years, nobody has put forth that those planners need to be hired to participate in developing this proposed ordinance?
They weren't involved in the planning of the ordinance, no, they were not.
So, who has the responsibility for either involving them or having not involved them?
Well, I guess that would fall on me, Ms. Salento. But I could tell you that this, this proposal on the acreage was first proposed four years ago, on 32 per acre. It was re-proposed at 28. The planning board came back, looked at it again, and did a lot more investigation over those 24 months, and then came back with their final recommendation, which then had to be put into form of ordinance. All they had was just the specifics of what they wanted to address. Putting that into the ordinance, it became confusing, because they, they were trying to be specific on things, but actually made it more confusing.
Okay.
And looking at this with the planners and with people who made the suggestions on the planning board, we're now at a point where we're going to clarify it and get it down, so it all makes sense. Because there's a lot of things that are interchangeable in there. When you start talking about the size of a unit, when you start talking about the percentage of two bedrooms versus one bedroom, when you talk about the number of parking spots that comply with the number of bedrooms, if you start changing those, you change everything. And so it really needs to be looked at from a planning perspective, and not just a planning board perspective, because those are not professional planners, and that's where we're at.
And thank you very much. And to that point, as you just provided, the planning board members are appointed, they're citizens, in some cases employees, in some case elected officials. So, they worked on this, they put forward a proposal, I understand it had to be put into an ordinance format. They never involved a hired planner or their planner. So that, to me, says that there's a very large gap somewhere in the process. Am I wrong about that?
Not necessarily, Ms. Salento, not necessarily. Because their planner looked at it, but he didn't look at it in the specifics of putting it into the ordinance, and what other conflicts it would create within the ordinance. Once it goes into the ordinance, and you see that, you know, well, when a B4 zone, it says this, and a B1 zone, it says this...
A reconciliation.
And those are conflicts between what is proposed in the mixed-use ordinance.
Okay, and so, thank you for clarifying that. I thought, based on the February joint Planning Board, Board of Ed, Board of Commissioners, zoning board meeting, that some of that was raised, and there was already discussion about how our code enforcement department was going to meet with some people, because there were some, I guess, inconsistencies between, as you said, what's already code today versus what. So it just seems like this is taking an awful long time.
Those were different inconsistencies than these inconsistencies.
Okay, so they were different inconsistencies, thank you. So, maybe I'll ask this question, since COA is on the table for the town having to comply for X number of units, whether it's 25 or 55, I'm not sure, but are there guidelines under COA that actually speak to square footage of apartment, number of parking spots? I'm curious.
Not that I'm aware of it.
Okay, so, since we may be hiring two different planners to work on these issues, one of those planners or those firms, I believe, could be the firm that the township has hired to address COA. Inglisino, is that correct? Are they a planner?
No, they're not the planner.
Okay, so they're a law firm?
Correct.
Well, could you ask them that question?
Well, COA is a much different issue, and this is a mixed-use, and not COA apartments. So, this is mixed-use apartments, which is a little bit different than a regular apartment building.
Okay, and I do understand that in 2015, the Board of Commissioners hired a planner to look at opportunities in Nutley, and I believe that planner said that you should have, that mixed-use is appropriate, you need to bring people into the downtown by having apartments, but I believe they also recommended a higher weight or a higher percentage of retail. So, is that the same planner that you might be hiring, that is currently not hired today?
No.
It's a different planner?
It was a different planner.
Okay. So, how does the, how do these planners get hired? Are there...
We didn't hire that planner, the planning board...
No, no, other, no, no, I mean, the future planners, the planners you're trying to use today, that you've tabled the ordinance 3397 for, because you have to go back to planners. I don't see it on the table, that someone is proposing that we spend X amount of money to hire a planner. Did I miss something in the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, just, you know, if I may, one, three minutes is well past, and this is not public comment, this is question and answer. I think it's clear that this is a process that's been going forward, we've had meetings with the planners, there's been a long time going, we've met with the planning board members who are on the committee, in the last few weeks, to try to clarify this. It's a process, and I think the Commissioners are handling it appropriately, and I don't think this is appropriate public comment to continue back and forth, when other people may want to address the microphone. But three minutes is what we're requiring, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only? Seeing none, Board of Commissioner announcements? Commissioners?
Just one, I'd just like to thank the people on Ridge Road. On Saturday, we had a massive tree come down with the sudden burst of wind, and knocked out the power, not only on Ridge Road, but on Chestnut Street, and a lot of the surrounding roads, and I just want to thank all those folks who were very patient while our shade tree department and public service came and shut the power off, so we could clear the road, and remove the tree, and then get the power restored. So, the patience of the folks there, under a very trying situation, did not go unnoticed, and I'd just like to thank them publicly for that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd just like to little dovetail on that. Actually, I did go up on Ridge Road that afternoon. It was actually the Nutley Bellevue football game, when I got the call, which I thought went really, really well, and congratulations to our Nutley Raiders. It was really good to see that game go on in the Oval, to bring some of the tradition back to the town. But, with that being said, I did run up there, and I have to tell you, Moore, your guys, I mean, the tree was probably one of the biggest trees I've ever seen in Nutley, and they did a great job. And I have to also commend public service, because, my three minutes is up.
Sorry.
But I really want to commend public service as well, because those guys really look out for us here in Nutley.
Yeah, they did.
And the power could have been off for a couple days...
Yeah.
And they really got it up and running, so kudos to your...
And it was up by 11 o'clock the next day, which was great.
It was unbelievable, really, for the damage that was there.
Anything else? Let's move on to ordinance introductions. This is ordinance on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, creating Chapter 115 Officers' Employees, Article 25 Custodial Records of the Township Code. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertising Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 4, 2018. I move the ordinance.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Order number 3402, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, amending Chapter 320 fees, Article 1, copies of public records of the Township Code. I move this ordinance to be passed to a second reading, advertising Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 4, 2018. I move the ordinance.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. This, 3403 is an ordinance on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Just in summary, this is an ordinance establishing pay-to-play rules, consistent with the state statutes that already exist, and establishing it on our, on our local books. As an entity, a municipality that receives transitional state aid, the state is asking that we have the state ordinance on our, our local book. So we're basically incorporating that as a compliance requirement. We have, historically have been following the state statutes with regard to pay-to-play rules. So having said that, ordinance 3403 is an ordinance establishing that a business entity which makes political contributions to municipal candidates and municipal and county political parties in excess of certain thresholds shall be limited in its ability to receive public contracts from the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading, and advertise in Nutley Sun, together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 4, 2018, so move.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Public hearings, we discussed 3397. 3399, the public hearing will be held at our next meeting. Would they, is that November 21st?
The, November 20th.
November 20.
I'm sorry, November 20.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers' resolutions, I'll read those. Whereas 3.3 million people have diabetes, 9.4% of the US population, another 84.1 million adults aged 18 years or older have pre-diabetes. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, declaring November as National Diabetes Awareness Month, and recognize November 14 as World Diabetes Days, Diabetes Days. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Essex County, County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with provision RS 40A 40-58, the following transfers of appropriation to 2018 Budget B, and the same are hereby authorized and approved, from garbage and trash removal, other expenses $25,000, to Health Department, other expenses $25,000. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley received sealed bids for surplus equipment no longer in use by the Township on October 24, 2018, and whereas Jersey One Auto Sales, 495 Tunnelley Avenue, Jersey City, and Marzax Inc., 247 Central Avenue, with Touchin, were the highest bidders, the equipment was a 2003 Toro 328D, four-wheel drive with blower, in the amount of $900. A 2,000 GMC Pickup 4x4 to Jersey One Auto, in the amount of $763, and a 2,006 Bluebird Bus, in the amount of $357. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the surplus items be sold to the highest bidder, Jersey One Auto Sales and Marzax Inc. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services for consultant and risk manager, the Township of Nutley, through a fair and open process pursuant to NJSA 19:44A-20.5. And whereas the RFQ and risk, for consultant and risk manager, were received and opened on October 24, 2018, by the Township Clerk, and whereas C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency, LLC, 410 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, was the most responsible and responsive request for qualifications. And whereas a contract for professional risk management consulting services is required in the bylaws of the Suburban Essex Liability Joint Insurance Fund, this contract shall not exceed $40,000 from January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019, and the funds are available from the Suburban Essex Joint Insurance Fund. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizes a contract to be entered into with C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency, as described herein, and be further resolved that the response to the request for qualifications for consultant and risk manager be placed on file with this resolution. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A 20.5. And whereas the requests for qualification for insurance, accident, and safety review board meetings were received and opened on October 24, 2018, by the Township Clerk, and whereas C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency, 410 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has provided these services in the past to the Township of Nutley, and is particularly suited to provide continued service. And whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on January 1, 2019, and continuing through December 31, 2019, with the option to extend one year. And whereas funds are available from account 9-01516245, and the amount of $10,000 have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency, LLC, as described herein, and the response to the request for qualification be placed on file with this resolution. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need for analog copper phone lines for existing alarm systems and departmental fax lines, and whereas NJSA 40A:11-5F permits the award of contract without bidding for the supply of any services, which is a public utility subject to the jurisdiction of the BPU. And whereas the proposal for Princeton Hosted Solutions, 700 Goodwin Avenue, Suite 330, Midland Park, New Jersey, will result in a substantial savings and improved quality, and is recommended by the Township's Office of Information Technology, for $1,998 per month, for a total amount of $47,952, beginning September 1, 2018, through June 30, 2020. And whereas funds are available from account 8-01510237, in the amount of $11,988, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification is attached to this resolution, and account number 9-01510237, in the amount of $23,976, subject to the adoption of the 2019 municipal budget, and also account number 0-01510237, in the amount of $11,988, subject to the adoption of the 2020 municipal budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Mayor and Township Clerk be, and they are hereby authorized, to enter into a contract with Princeton Hosted Solutions for the provision of analog phone lines throughout the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Strategic Products and Services, 300 Littleton Road, Parsippany, New Jersey, has been awarded a contract for the Township's Avea Phone System Maintenance pursuant to the provision of NJSA 40A:11-5T, on July 19, 2016, via Resolution 187-16. And whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a contract with Strategic Products and Services for a three-year agreement in the amount of $17,354.04 per year. And whereas Converge One Inc., 3344 Highway 149, Eagan, Minnesota, acquired Strategic Products and Services. And whereas all agreements currently in place between Strategic Products and Services have been assigned to Converge One Inc., effective November 6, 2017, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizes and approves the amendment of the contract for the Township's Avea Phone System Maintenance with Converge One Inc., effective November 6, 2017, through the remainder of the existing agreement with Strategic Products and Services. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the municipal clerk be, and is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for requests for proposals for banking services. Be further resolved that the request for proposals shall be due on Tuesday, November 27, at 3:00 PM, addressed to the municipal clerk, Township of Nutley, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, so move.
Second?
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The next resolution I read is for a change order for special legal counsel services. Before I read, I want to note that these fees are reimbursable through our redevelopment agreement that's currently being negotiated with the redevelopment of the Hoffler Roche property. Whereas the law firm of Inglisino, Weber, Wiscalla, and Taylor, 600 Parsippany Road, Suite 204, Parsippany, New Jersey, has been awarded a non-fair and non-open contract as a professional service pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A 20.4 and 20.5, as as appropriate to provide special development counsel on January 2nd, 2018 by Resolution 4-18, and whereas such services have exceeded the original contract amount of $95,000. Whereas the Director of Revenue, Finance, and Code has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change order number one provides special development counsel in the amount of $15,000. Whereas funds are available from account 801-226-205, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that change order number one in the amount of $15,000 be and is hereby approved. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $1,683.81 for block 2601, Lot 13. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS40A:4-58, the following transfers of appropriations in the 2018 budget be and the same are hereby authorized and approved from Treasurer's Office salary and wage $35,000 to Treasury Office ONE $35,000. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Building Department has received a payment in the amount of $16,825.16 for the safety and stabilization guarantee for site plan application of Kingsland Street Urban Renewal for the property located at 340 King Kingsland Street. Whereas the safety and stabilization guarantee was collected as required by Municipal Land Use Law, NJSA 40:55D1, specifically NJSA 40:55D53A1D, and said amount was deposited in account T.15912914. Whereas the construction official has reviewed and determined that the $16,825.16 is due to Kingsland Urban Renewal. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund the safety and stabilization guarantee in the amount of $16,825.16 to Kingsland Street Urban Renewal LLC. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracco?
This resolution number 249-18 is, whereas the Township of Nutley determined that property described on Schedule A attached to here to the Incorporated hereon has been abandoned by its owner and title as junk along with standard title. This is for auction, let me just see the date, for Tuesday, December 11th, for a 2003 Nissan, a 2009 Toyota, and a 2003 Honda. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The next resolution is 250-18. It's also for Tuesday, December 11th at 2:00 PM at Twin Towing. There'll be auctioning off a 2000 Volkswagen, and a 2005 Honda, and a 2012 Ford. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS40A:4-58, the following transfers of appropriation in the 2018 budget be and the same are hereby authorized and approved. Fire salary and wage $200,000 to fire only. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund $100 to Oliver Sidle, 476 Walnut Street, Nutley, New Jersey, for refund the payment for municipal park permit. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations: Friends of Nutley Singers, License Number 40-18, an on-premise merchandise raffle, and License Number 41-18, 50/50 cash raffle, both to be held Friday, January 11, 2019. Friends of Nutley Singers, License Number 42-18, on-premise 50/50 cash raffle, to be held Sunday, March 10, 2019. Organization of Parents and Educators, License Number 43-18, on-premise 50/50 cash raffle, and License Number 44-18, off-premise 50/50 cash raffle, both to be held Friday, February 8, 2019. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk in the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle passes. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution number 247-18 has been pulled. 248-18, whereas Nutley is a member of the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council, whereas the Morris County Co-op awarded a bid for road resurfacing, contract number six, Cat A, hot mix asphalt, Cat B, bituminous concrete in place, Cat C, milling of bituminous concrete in place, and Cat one, resurfacing preparations to Tilcon, New York Incorporated, 622 Mount Pope Road, Wharton, New Jersey, for the period of January 1, 2018 to December 31, 2018. Whereas Nutley wishes to resurface Highfield Lane, Washington Avenue, the River Road in Nutley, and whereas contracts that exceed the bid threshold are required to be awarded by resolution, whereas funds are available from account number G4104401, and ordinance number 3345A, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to Tilcon, New Jersey, not to exceed $24,504, and that the mayor and the township clerk be, and they are hereby authorized, to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone, provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Rowan Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I have two questions. I heard a rumor, and that's why I came here. Did you hear anything about the Nutley Pool being sold and possibly having apartments over that way?
Continue, Mr. Moore.
That's, heard a rumor. That's what I was just wondering if it was true or not.
Continue, Mr. Moore.
Oh, okay, okay. On the bill list, water utility was added. Is there, there was a column, but that's the first time I noticed. Maybe it's been there, I hadn't noticed it before. Is that a new category?
Continue, Mr. Moore.
No, I'm just curious. You add in a-
We will answer your questions, Mr. Moore.
Pardon me?
We will answer your questions, not right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Michael O'Dreary, 133 High Street. I've been watching the media lately, obviously Channel 12 News, NJ.com, and our Attorney General, Gabor Gual, he has an office of public integrity and accountability going on. And I've been reading, I think it was on NJ.com, that there have been some investigations in some towns in Essex County, Hudson, and they're investigating DPW's department, I think a zoning board department in another town. Are there any investigations going on in this town that you know of?
Do you have any other questions, Mr. O'Dreary?
Can it be answered now?
You'll be answered, but not right now.
Is that, is that part of the rules of the Open Public Meetings Act?
This is public comment, and we will answer your questions.
Okay. I'm just curious about that. And I don't mean to reflect on the recent past, but this density question is very important to many people in this town, because it does go to what we just went through yesterday, and the same time, almost the same time the year before, that this town's, the toll money is that this town shot down two very expensive referendums. And I kind of hope you fine gentlemen realize that we don't want any more referendums. The people, for a second time in two short years, well, actually one short year, has sent another strong message that, no more. I'm going to probably tell this in a BOB too, but it has to stop. But please, to think about my first question.
Thank you, Mr. O'Dreary. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. Just to add a little clarification, earlier Ms. Solento had made a comment about the planning board creating the definition for mixed use and density for 10 years. The reality is, the zoning board has been asking for guidance from the planning board since 2008. So between 2008 and 2016, there were sessions, meetings to discuss the definition. Why you took all that time to actually create some recommendations in 2016, that's a long time, and now you are consistently delaying the process because more questions keep coming up. So, I mean, if all of this had been addressed back in 2010, 11, 12, I think this whole issue would have been put to bed. So that's, that's my comment on that. I'm holding in my hand the signatures of Nutley citizens who signed the petition for term limits for you, the Board of Commissioners, to enact a resolution for term limits for two consecutive three-year terms for board members on the following boards, planning, zoning, rent leveling, and library. I present these signatures to you in request that you listen to the voters of Nutley and vote yes to Commissioner Rogers' resolution. The Nutley Coalition for Change is a grassroots team of citizens that is growing, and we look forward to sharing our next initiative at the next meeting in two weeks. Your yes vote for this term limit signifies change that is wanted by citizens and voters of Nutley. Thank you.
You hand those to the clerks, please. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Maria Bozza, 209 Highfield Lane. I just would like to address this to Mr. Jenna Tempo. I was going to bring it up at the last meeting, but there was so much going on with other, you know, you were giving away whatever, and I didn't want to embarrass anyone. But since that last tirade at the, at the town meeting before that, I contacted Trenton, and I spoke to several very informative people who emailed me the generic description of the town clerk, town attorney, rather. And as a town attorney, I'm not going to read you what, you know, what your job is, but as, when I read over that description, it does, you're not an elected official, but rather an appointed one, and nowhere in that description does it say that you have the responsibility or the right to use your position to bully, insult, reprimand, or raise your voice to any or chastise a taxpayer because he asks for too many Oprah requests, or because you just don't happen to like him. If the tables were turned, I think, and we, the citizens, began to scream and yell at you people here, I know that the police officer would step in, and rightly so. Your behavior, I thought, was unprofessional, undignified, and arrogant for anyone, but most especially for someone who was paid yearly by the taxpayers whom you insulted. What is even more shocking to me was that not one of you felt the need to say something to him. So I have to conclude that you agree with his behavior and think it's perfectly okay. And secondly, I don't know why he felt the need to defend Mr. Evans or the town clerk, since the questions were not asked of him, but rather of the commissioner. And Mr. Jenna Tempo, you know, don't think we are all stupid that sit on this side of the, of the podium, and we all know that politics isn't always what it appears to be. Based on this, I do think you owe people in this audience an apology. And to bring up term limits again, you are the classic reason we need term limits, not only for elected officials, but for appointed ones as well, because it seems that you and others, after 10, 12, 16 years, carve your initials in the seat and think that the town belongs to you, and that we have nothing to say about it, and we should not question your authority. Please never forget that your authority comes from this side of the podium and not that side of the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Bozza. Anyone else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Yes, Amy Solento, 70, Newman Avenue, Nutley. And I appreciate Marie's comments, because what I'm interpreting here, what's happening right now, is that public comment is now considered a time where we can ask questions, but you're not going to answer them. That's just what's happened with several people. So I have not seen any published rules that indicate that you won't be answering questions presented during open public comment. Is this now a new rule for this, in the last 15 minutes?
Solento, we're going to answer your questions. We're not going to answer in a back-and-forth manner.
Okay, so when are they going to be answered? Because there have been questions-
Most of them will be answered tonight.
Okay, so thank you very much. So I have a couple of things in terms of the ongoing investigation and discussions with Scander Kenny Mecca and his development company or companies. There haven't been any updates provided as of late, and it's my understanding that the discussions continue. These don't seem to involve anything in terms of them breaking any rules. And I'm not really sure why the statutes don't apply to them. So I'm asking the question, how is it that converting approved one-bedroom apartments to two-bedroom apartments, which is how it's been presented, at least to me, and I believe to the people in this audience in past meetings, in the past six months, how has it been that those didn't break a law? So that's a question. And if they did break a law, when will charges be filed? And through what organization? I believe that we have a town prosecutor that the township and the taxpayers pay for. So will the prosecutor be brought in in terms of the laws or the statutes that have been transgressed, we'll say, by the developer? I have other questions. We've had planners that the township has hired in 2015, I don't know, JGSC or something, about looking at the entire downtown. You've indicated tonight that you're not really using that planner or the information provided by that planner. You've hired a planner about the Chickolini Building. There was money approved more than two years ago. So what are the results of that study? When will they be presented? And is that same planner, the planner that you're considering working with, in terms of the discussion we had earlier about density and mixed use? And then, is that also the same planner that we've been using in terms of the redevelopment at the former Roche site, or is that a different planner? So I'd like to know who all those planners are, and I'd like to understand timelines in terms of what we've already hired them to do, when plans or responses have been delivered, and if they haven't been delivered, when will they be delivered? There's also the issue of an upcoming master plan revision, which will be required by law. So has a planner been designated? Is it one of the aforementioned planners? If not, when will that planner be designated? What will the process be in terms of hiring that planner? And what's the timeline to execute hiring that planner in advance of revising the master plan? Additionally, in terms of the situation with Mecca or any other developer, and the, I guess we'll say the set aside of ordinance 3397 at this time, I'm requesting that there be a suspension of apartment development, mixed use development, or maybe establishing a moratorium until the town figures this out. As you're well aware, over 50% of the voters that turned out at the polls on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, voted no regarding referendums of almost $70 million to expand our schools to address overcrowding. There has been some question in terms of whether overcrowding comes from apartment development, or it comes from homes being sold by empty nesters and people moving in that have children. I don't think anyone's done a really clear study on that, but in the absence of that study, I am requesting that a moratorium on apartment development be established. And I've run out of time.
Thank you, Mrs. Solento.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Carmine Alessio, 81 East Center Street. I guess the word would be reiterate, Amy's comment about the 18 one-bedrooms that were converted to two-bedrooms on, or at 113 East Center. I, I don't see how this was not a known thing, and no one seems to want to comment about, about it. When, you know, I live right there, and- When, you know, I live right there, and I actually sat through the planning board meetings and heard all the testimony and that. And it seems like this was a plan in the making to conduct this type of activity with the making of the one-bedrooms or the studios into two-bedroom. And during the testimony, the planning board did stipulate or kind of, they were kind of firm on, they didn't want any of the grassland taken away from the buildings in the back there between B and C. And a year later, I heard the jackhammers going, and between B and C, there was additional parking made. Now, you know, my concern is the overdevelopment of the area, it always was, and to try to see fit for that zone, even though the town has the right to, you know, change things accordingly. So my concern is, you know, I, I went to the code enforcement and actually said, hey, what are you doing over there? And no one seems to give any kind of answer, except for maybe that we didn't change the footwork of the parking area that went from grassland that was ordered by the planning board not to happen. That's one thing. Along with the testimony by that contractor and his attorney was that that parcel of land be a gated community, that didn't seem to happen. Along with the two-carriage road that goes from East Center Street into the complex that was ordered by the planning board to get some kind of a title or disclosure or foreclosure from the county in order to proceed with the project within forty-five days. That was swept under the carpet and the project went forward. Like, this is the thing, you know? Why am I standing up here? Because it affects me and my community. It affects the property value of my property. It affects my property being sold, maybe as an entrance to a project like that, which is a multimillion-dollar project, to maybe, you know, I'm there to try to fit in the community and maybe make some money. But, you know, that's okay, you went around me. Now, the planning board ordered a title search for that property, and the attorney was there saying that he would pay all the back taxes for that quote-unquote "Springer Lane" road. And three years after the project was built, Mr. Jenna Tempo went to the county, and the town of Nutley seems to own that road going into the back there. Now that affects me. It creates density, which I've been complaining about for years, coming up here between the park. It, it's like, you know, I'm a part of the community, too. We've been there since the 1920s. I'm speculating, just like my neighbor next door has an empty lot with trucks running out of it continuously. So, you know, I mean, like, get the act together. Supposed to be a two-carriage road on the left and a two on the right to enter this facility. There's a driveway that leads back into the complex on the left. Now, what's my concern? I walk down my driveway when it's empty-
Mr. Mayor, that's five minutes.
And I, I'm aware of it, I got-
Five minutes is up, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask for ten seconds?
Wrap it up.
I'm walking down my driveway, and cars are going up my, a car went up my driveway. I almost got hit by a car. Because the safety issue here is, there should be two two-carriage roads there, not one owned by the town of Nutley, which hinders my sale and is totally illegal according to the Municipal Land Use Act. You're supposed to own the property abutting the road, which they don't own, and the driveway, that's another issue. There's not supposed to be a driveway there. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Alessio. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Hi, my name is Emily Donhue. I live at 88 McKinley Street. A lot of the people here already spoke to my concerns, which involve multi-use buildings with residential properties. The ordinance number 3397 that was tabled for this evening stated that seventy percent of the dwellings shall be two bedrooms or more. These apartments will undoubtedly have children, and we are now slated to gain a double-wide stacked trailer at Spring Garden in the fall, as well as additional trailers at Washington School. I know some people spoke of the referendum. Proposal one, which would have expanded those schools, only was voted down by 168 votes at last count, so I wouldn't say that it was an overwhelming no from the town. However, it was voted down at this time. And I just want to know if you have ever considered sitting down with the Board of Education to sort of collaborate on some creative problem-solving to solve this issue that affects a large part of our community, as many of us have children, many of us are children, and we need to be fairly educated in safe and proper building spaces. So I'm wondering when this board and the Board of Ed will sit down together and collaborate on some different ideas, since the community seems to be in a split over spending more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Good evening, Glenn Wallace, 106 Hopper Avenue. First of all, I'd like to ask, is there a policy on the public comment portion of your town meeting? And if there is, I'd like to see one. My first subject is Hop and the Roach. I'm looking for a number, not a song and a dance, just a simple number. With the existing structures that we have there and the occupants that we have now, what will be our tax income for the year 2019? The next subject is our handbook, the township handbook. Okay? I want to know whose job it is to take care of the handbook, to update it on an annual basis, as it states in the handbook, and why has it been twenty-one years since that handbook has been updated? And so are we paying somebody to do this? Are they not doing their job? This is the questions I'd like answered. The next subject is Chickolini. I don't believe everything I read, so that's why I'm going to ask you a question. I did read that that building is a tear-down. If so, is it safe for people to be entering that building, which I believe is true? And lastly, people have been fighting for transparency and accountability for a long time, and I think probably as important as that is respect and truthfulness. And I've witnessed personally, the lack of that, I don't have to point out anybody, but I think it's something that really needs to be taken a look at. It makes one wonder what the kind of behavior is behind closed doors with one's mother, wives, or daughters, if it, if it's conducted that way here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. So just real quick, question about the employee handbook. Is there a conflict of interest policy in that handbook? And is there an anti-nepotism policy in that handbook? Next question, a few meetings ago, Mr. Inglisino had presented his ability to negotiate the requirement for affordable housing down to a number of 55. And while it was celebrated, I heard a comment that we were good until 2025 with that number of 55 requirement. Come 2025, will we then be required to fulfill the remaining number of affordable housing units that the state is asking of us? And then my last question is, was a municipal garage placed behind the Chickolinis? Because I live two blocks up, and I hear the beeping of the trucks backing up at six o'clock in the morning. And I'm an early riser, but I know people, other people do sleep in a little later, and especially on a Saturday. People down on Hillside, their backyards back right up to that garage. And I'm just wondering if that's an absolute necessity? Is there any way to minimize that?
There's no garage.
Is there any way to minimize that noise?
Wait, are you asking about a garage also?
Or something, something, there's trucks back there making a tremendous amount of noise.
Behind Chickolinis.
Back there, yeah. In the wee hours of the morning.
I mean, the only garage that I'm aware of is behind Belaluce's.
Oh, maybe that's it, maybe that's-
Where we have our, you know, the fire department has hazmat there, and I think-
Yeah, we'll answer it. Okay.
I'm, I'm just commenting because some residents on Hillside have made comments about it and asked me to bring that to your attention this evening, that's all. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Rubino, 48 North Road. There are so many questions asked tonight, and I only heard, I think, one being answered, and that was the last one about the, the noise. Am I missing something here?
Mrs. Rubino, we're going to go through them after the public comment portion is, is over.
I don't quite understand that now. How was I, how are you going to do that?
I got a list of the questions as they were asked.
And you're going, we have to sit here and listen to all the answers to the questions that were asked? Is that it?
Correct.
Okay. I, don't you think it's a little bit easier to do it as they come up?
Well, it'd be nice if we asked questions and we answered questions and we didn't get back into a back-and-forth, but this way, we're going to answer everything that was asked.
All right.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting? Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Let's see if we can go through these. The pool and being sold, I have no information that the pool club has been sold. Anybody else have any information?
I'm not aware of any.
Mr. Jenna Tempo?
No, Mr. Mayor.
As far as the water utility being on the bill list, I think it's been on there for a while. I don't know exactly how long, but it's been on there. Mr. Jenna Tempo?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've heard the same rumor, Mr. Mayor, but I am not at liberty to comment on it, and I will not comment on it.
Density was brought up a number of times. All I can tell you is we're trying to get that ordinance right. We're going to, you know, it, it's, it's very complicated, and it's been complicated, and yes, it's been going on a long time. All I could say is, at this point, as the mayor, we're moving it forward, and we're going to have something that makes sense and something that, that we think will not have any conflict the rest of our zoning ordinance. Anybody else wish to comment on that?
I'd like to add something on that, if I can. Actually, that has been going back and forth, and it is a very complex document. It started when, when I was the mayor, trying to get that through the channels, and every time you do one thing, it seems like it affects another thing. So it's not that anybody here is trying to delay it. At the last commission meeting or two of them beforehand, when we went to introduce this, I did recommend that we send it to planners and make sure that, you know, we get this exactly right, you know, for the future. But it seems like every time we address one issue, another one arises. And it's not that we're trying to delay. We don't, you know, like somebody said at the mic, we're the voice, we're supposed to be the voices of the people here. You know, we're supposed to listen to the people and, and do what the majority of the town wants, and that's how I run my life as an elected official. But just to kind of wing it at this point, coming this far, you know what, it won't stop the development in the future. When we got these information up to us with the twenty-eight units per acre, you know, that raised a tremendous red flag if we're not going to develop in Nutley anymore. And I think that the zoning board has been asking us for a long time to, to, to get this done, so they're not making these big decisions in town of how many apartments you go on a property, so forth and so on. And I think it's our obligation, you know, to reach out to the professionals, because I'm a professional planner myself, and I want to make sure that that document is spot-on moving forward, that we are not putting a lot of pressure on our zoning board or our planning board members to make these decisions that really impact the town immensely in the future.
Can I also address that? We've, we've been doing this for far too long, in my opinion, but we do need to get it right. There are many items that are contained in that ordinance that I do not agree with, all right? And I'd like to hear what the rationale is, all right, from our professionals as to why things are in there. And I'll give you a couple of examples. The number of, of two- and three-bedroom apartments that are called for and that, I don't agree with. The density at 28, I do not agree with, all right? I'm not a proponent of more multifamily housing, all right? So I want to make sure that we protect the town moving forward and we don't overdevelop and we have folks moving in who are planting shallow roots and will move out, all right? We've, we've been known for years and years as a community that has deep roots, all right? Parents, children, grandchildren, so forth and so on, staying here, establishing themselves here and keeping this, the community that it is. So I know it's been a long time, far too long, all right? And I'm sure there are a lot of good reasons, I don't know what they all are, all right? But we will do it and we will get it right. And once my questions are answered, then I will, I will respond accordingly.
Just, I, I don't want to repeat with Commissioner Tucci just said, because I think it was a very good summary of not just his concerns, but actually the concerns of the Board of Commissioners. It was raised that I sit on the planning board, and I, I sat on the, I only sit on the planning board recently. When the matter was discussed at the planning board level, it was at a time when there was more vocal, vocalsness on the part of residents to want this ordinance brought forward and a recommendation from the planning board brought forward. There were questions that needed to be resolved at the planning board level, but in the interest of actually trying to expedite this, was to move it from the planning board, because ultimately, in order for anything to be adopted in the town, it has to be done by ordinance, by, by this board. So by actually moving it from the planning board with several open questions, we're actually getting it to the final destination where a determination could be made. It was, been raised several times about the planners. And yes, there, there's a planner for the planning board who is specifically hired to address planning board and zoning board applications for subdivisions, variances, and so on, and who also assisted with some of the development of the mixed-use recommendation. But bringing it to the Board of Commissioners, recognizing that over the past few years, there's been redevelopment of what I would characterize as distressed properties in town. And so it's very important for us to determine what the impact is on the, the town of any continued development, which is why we've requested a planner to actually take a very comprehensive look at what the ordinance requires. So in addition to what Commissioner Tucci said, there is one thing in the ordinance that says that you have to have side yard setbacks on Franklin Avenue. Basically, three feet on one side or four feet on one side, ten feet on the other, or fourteen feet. How do you, on Franklin Avenue, put fourteen feet between buildings? They're all connected. So you would actually turn, if we were to adopt the ordinance with that provision still in there, that would make every business on Franklin Avenue a non-conforming use. So there are things that are technical in the ordinance that we want to make sure are corrected. And- corrected, in addition to what should be the size of an apartment, what should be the mix between one and two bedrooms, and what should be the number of units that would be allowed per acre. We are all very concerned about that, and so therefore we've asked for professional input so that we can actually make a better decision.
Next, with the term limits, and we look forward to Commissioner Rogers coming forward with his resolution. The Mecca properties.
Just one thing on the, on the term limits. We're going to have to investigate, because, for example, with the library board, there's a state statute that says that library members are appointed to a term of five years, and they're appointed by the mayor. So there has to be internal clarity around if a ordinance was, as suggested was to be introduced, would that violate state statute? And so we've asked questions to start to get better clarity around what are the state statutes around board appointments, not just at the library board, but also at the zoning board of adjustment and the planning board.
Mr. Jena Tempo, you want to clarify anything on the Mecca properties and where that is?
Just one second on what Commissioner Evans just said. We're doing research on the Land Use Act and also the Library Board Act to make sure what the situation is relative to term limits. With regard to the Mecca properties, I can report that a letter has been delivered to Mr. Mecca advising him of his violations, township's position legally on the issue. We're waiting for a response, at which point we'll take additional action if necessary. We've had an opportunity to vet all the investigation issues, and hopefully this will move forward much quickly, much more quickly now, and see if we can get a resolution that the town is agreeable to. So I can't reveal the details of it. Obviously, it's potential litigation still, but at least I can report on that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Jena Tempo. Mr. Robbins, you want, JGC, they weren't really a planner, were they? They were...
No, they were, that was part of the study that was done to survey the inventory of retail properties in town, as well as the vacancies in town, as well as to survey the population as to their, what they wanted to provide in terms of feedback to us in terms of the issues. They did summarize in their report several recommendations, one of which related to signage, wayfinding signs, not just on Franklin Avenue, but also on the, on the, actually, the perimeter of the, of the town. Some recommendations as to ordinances, as to retail space standards, so how they're creating a common look of retail space. They did note that to create and affect a corridor effect to, to a business area, that it was important in today's environment to increase allowable density in the, increasing the density available on Franklin Avenue, which we have significant concerns about. They did raise a recommendation about establishing with the Chamber of Commerce a special improvement district, which would entail hiring of a manager for the business district to actually do the work to, in effect, promote the business area, as well as look at the various types of businesses that we would look to seek to have occupy the space in our, in our business districts around the, around the town. We have had great, we've had previous discussions regarding the special improvement district, and with the variable out there at the time related to Hoffman de Roche, that was, that's been held until we have greater clarity.
The, was asked about the planner for Chickolini on the density and Hoffman de Roche. Yes, that's one planner, that's Topology. They're the ones that have been working on Hoffman de Roche and the density and looking at the Chickolini property. Master plan revision, I know of no going forward with a master plan revision at this time.
It's required by law to be reviewed every 10 years. The last time it was a comprehensive review was completed was in 2012, so it's due for another comprehensive review in 2022. And at such time, when the preparation is to do that, the planner will be hired to provide that special service. I recall the last time we hired, the planning board hired a planner, it costs $50,000 to do that. We're obviously prepared to support that, but the timing is, it's required by statute every 10 years.
The legality of a moratorium, I think Commissioner Tucci is still working on a white paper on that subject.
That is correct, and I'm in, I'm in the final stages of that, and I would like nothing better than to have this board issue a moratorium, and I know that's a sentiment of many of the members here, all right? However, we are not at liberty to do that. It is, in fact, illegal to do that. All right? So that's where we stand with that. And just one more comment on the Chickolini building. Commissioner Evans did a fine job of bringing everyone up to date as to where we are. Once we get the results of Topology's review and their recommendations, we obviously will move forward. We have many needs, all right, on Franklin Avenue, ranging from parking to better shopping and better utilization of space. And there are several folks who are, in fact, interested in purchasing that building, the same as, and I don't know when raised this, but I will, the old bike shop next to the middle school. I will be corresponding in the very near future with the Board of Education, because, as you recall, we purchased that building for them, all right? So that there wasn't some other use in there that would preclude them from expanding the middle school and helping to alleviate that space problem. So I believe they do have the funding in place, and I will, I will verify that, and we will be looking to sell that to the Board of Education so that they can use it in the future to alleviate their space problem.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Talked about the referendum and us communicating with the Board of Ed. We communicate with the Board of Ed on an ongoing basis. You can look at their demographers, the demographers report, they've had two demographers, or two reports on, that I think are pretty accurate on what's going on in the town. And it was also brought up about mixed use and their impact, and I don't want to say mixed use doesn't have an impact, because that would be false. But if you look at Spring Garden, where a young lady back there brought up about having a trailer next year, there's no mixed-use buildings in the Spring Garden area, and we have overcrowding issue there. So there's other issues besides mixed use that we've gone over in the past, the full-day kindergarten, special education, turnover of one-family homes, all impacting on our overcrowding issue.
I'd like to just make one more comment on that, if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
You know, as far as the Board of Ed and the trailers that you brought up, and I happen to have a son at Spring Garden, a fifth grader, and I have two kids that went, excuse me, and that went through there. And I think that the referendum, the feeling that I get from the people of the town is that, you know, the $70 million is a lot of money, and I know we're not far apart. The thing that I was looking for with this referendum and even before the referendum with these trailers, because I don't think anybody here wants to see trailers, but I think that what the people are looking for is options, that not if it's, if a $70 million referendum doesn't pass, well, what is the option? A trailer. To me, that's not a good enough answer. I think that we have to, you know, figure things out, rather than just put trailers in front of these schools and, you know, have a long-term plan in place. And it's not a stone thrown at the Board of Ed, because I know they've worked very, very hard on all these issues in trying to get it passed. But just to say that, you know, if these referendums don't pass, there's no other options, I think that we, there's always options. And I think that we owe it to the public and the taxpayers here to research every possible option that we could have to fix these problems. And like Commissioner Tucci said, when we bought and purchased the bike shop, you know, we had intentions that, you know, we were going to be able to, you know, do something. So moving forward, I still think that there's going to be extra funds needed to solve the problem, you know? A lot of people, I have this discussion in my store every day, you know, about, you know, the referendum, about the school population, about the building. You know, when we developed the sections of Nutley that we did, you know, and especially when I was the mayor at the time, it was one-bedroom apartments. And when I graduated in 1983 here in Nutley, I believe my graduating class was over 550 kids. You know, now we get about 350 graduating here. So, you know, the future of the demographer mayor and, you know, which the mayor brought up, you know, these are, these are works, work in progress. You know, there's, there's a lot of different views on it, but the only thing that I'm looking for as a commissioner and as a taxpayer is just more options, rather than it's, you know, this is referendum or trailers.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next was 113 East Center Street and Springer Lane. I don't know if we have any information on that. Mr. Jena Tempo, you have...
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. We, we do actually have title to that. Part of the resolution originally was to require the developer to buy that through the township, and that's still, that's one of the issues that we're still looking to resolve with the developer. So it has not been resolved yet, but it is one of the requirements of the planning board.
Mayor, if I might, so was that one of the violations that were included in that correspondence?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
It's a compliance violation with the resolution.
That was brought up about the 70% two-bedroom in the mixed-use ordinance, and I don't, I'm not going to, I'll speak for everybody, you guys can, none of us are in favor of 70% two-bedroom.
Me too.
None of us are in favor of that, and that's one of the, it's one of the issues that needs to be resolved. Tax income from Hoffman de Roche, I don't know if anybody has that off the top of your head.
Sure. The, today, the 2018 tax revenue for all of Hoffman de Roche, which is the existing buildings and the land, is $4.3 million. In 2013, when Hoffman de Roche announced that they were closing the property, the revenue at that time was $10 million. So the demolition of many buildings on the Nutley side, plus the change in the use of the property under law, we had to adjust the assessed value of the property from $313 million down to $126 million, or roughly $187 million reduction in a commercial ratable. The loss in revenue was projected to be $6 million that we, as taxpayers, would have had to absorb, recognizing that we went to the state and actually wrote modifications to the existing transitional aid definition that actually allowed a town like Nutley to be included in the transitional aid discussion. Because absent the impact at Roche, Nutley does not qualify for aid under the state formula, because our, of two things, our median income of the town, as well as the assessed values of our property. And in fact, in the negotiations that I was involved with this year, when pushing for aid, I was told that in, on the list of communities that it was in need of aid, Nutley ranked number 323 on the list. So because of what we did in 2013 to change the transitional aid formula to include the departure of a major commercial ratable from the state of New Jersey, we qualify for aid on that basis. It had to be 50% of a commercial ratable and at least 9% of our tax levy in order to qualify for aid, and it had to leave the state. Hoffman de Roche qualified for that. As a result, we've been able to get state aid, additional state aid each year. So in 2014, we got $2.7 million because of the adjustments. In 2015 and 16, we got $5.5 million each year. In 2017, we received $3.6 million, and for the current year, we received $4.1 million. So each year, that aid money is covering what that loss is on that town. We also have had the benefit of the new development in town, which in and of itself is providing annually $2.2 million of new ratables. So absent the state aid, absent the new ratables in town, the amount of taxes to, we would have to consider raising or look at cost avoidance increase would be $6 million, which we've been avoiding since 2014. And we continue to work through that each year in order to help us get to the point where the conversion of the Hoffman de Roche property from where it is today to what it will become generates the, some of the tax revenues that we lost, so that the taxpayers of Nutley, the residential taxpayers, do not have to absorb those costs. So it's very complex. There is, to be clear, because you didn't ask, but in full disclosure, there is a tax appeal that's pending on the property from the developer for years 16, 17, and 18, to try and take the $126 million that it's currently, currently assessed at and lower it, which would increase the shortfall of revenue until it is transitioned. So the other thing that we face is, just like we, we looked at with the medical school, in order to allow a medical school to be established on that property, we negotiated and insisted that the building be subject to tax, that the medical school only occupies four floors of the building, so the pilot agreement for it would only cover four floors of the building and not the rest of the property. But the pilot agreement itself had to pay 100% of the municipal and school tax, which is, which we required. Pilot agreements normally do not pay a school tax, because they do not contribute to the schools in any way. In Nutley, we insisted that the taxing agreement include full local taxation. What's more is we insisted full local taxation from a hospital and a university, which historically do not pay any taxes at all. So we have a taxing agreement in place for the medical school, for the four floors. The rest of the property, subject to the medical school, is subject to regular taxes like everyone else. We are in the process of negotiating a pilot agreement on Building 1, which is the building that will be occupied by Ralph Lauren, on the same principle that they must pay the full extent of the municipal and the school tax. The reason why I'm not saying the county is because under pilot law, only 5% is paid to the county, the rest of it's not paid. So what we are negotiating is the fact that whatever the taxes are, Nutley gets 100% of its share. Again, the same position is, the building and the business of Ralph Lauren does not add schoolchildren to the school system. Maybe people living in town who work there might, but the building itself doesn't. But we're insisting on full local taxation, and we'll continue to have that posture. The reason for that is, we need every penny we can get to reverse the negative effect of the departure of Hoffman de Roche and the demolitions that have occurred on the property. So I know that's more than what you had asked for, Glenn, but I thought it was valuable to give you that fuller picture.
Thank you, Commissioner. The employee handbook, we actually received a draft tonight along with policies and procedures for supervisors, and that's under review by the Board of Commissioners. And we should be passing a resolution adopting that perhaps at the next meeting. Was brought up about the Chickolini building being a tear down. I'll let Commissioner Tucci on the condition of the building, but I think that was in the context of, could it be used as a school building?
Yeah. The Chickolini is obviously in need of some repairs, and was, in fact, in need of some repairs when the Chickolinis occupied it. There are some leaks in the roof. I do not believe the building... I do not believe the building is structurally unsound. If it was to be used in the present square footage that's there, yes, absolutely, it would need to be, it would need to be improved. Tear-down, that's very subjective, depending on, on what the use will be moving forward. And that, that parcel is large enough where I believe we can get several different uses that will be beneficial to the town. And Mayor, if I might, I just want to digress for one minute, just to follow up on what Commissioner Evans was talking about as far as taxes, and I totally agree with Commissioner Petracco. On the school board referendum for that house assessed that $313,000 that we joke about all the time, I believe the increase-
325.
325, I'm sorry, thank you. I believe that increase would have been about $394, $395 for, for both proposals. For, for many of us, that's not a true figure. I, I can speak for myself, all right, I know it would have been at least double that, all right, and that's before you get the normal increases. So, my increase is moving forward for the next 15, 20 years, however, however long, excuse me, however long they went out for those bonds, would have probably been in excess of $1,000 a year, okay? Do we need to, to address the space issue? We absolutely need to. And while my baby is now 33 years old, he has two babies and one baby on the way of his own coming into this world, as well as a bunch of other grandchildren that I have, about seven others, all right, who are either going to the pre-kindergarten class or attending regular school here, here in Nutley, and we need, we need to address it. But just a regurgitation of basically what that last referendum was is not the answer, okay? Going back, and I'll speak to, to one comment that the other Commissioner, Mayor Scarpelli made years ago, I think we needed to take baby steps, to try and, to try and bite off $70 million in a referendum, all right, with Hoffman-Laroche not being fully developed yet, all right, and with a lot of variables still being out there, I'm not so sure it was so realistic. People in Nutley are very smart, all right, and people in Nutley like to stay here, but it needs to be affordable, all right? That was not an affordable option. And I totally agree that we need to address that space issue, we need to correct it, but the options that were presented, all right, again, was not the right option. And as far as collaboration with the Board of Education, all right, we've collaborated on many different things. We're presently in the process of trying to collaborate on the Mural Park, because that track and that entire field, which we co-own with the Board of Education, is in need of an upgrade, and that'll be somewhere north of a half a million dollars, all right, to do that. The Oval is in desperate need of improvement, and then Mayor Petracco and myself went before the Board of Education and said, "Let's find a way where you can sign it over to the township so that we can apply for different types of funding, whether it's green acres funding, whether it's open space funding, whether it's foundation funding, that they are precluded from, for, to apply for." All right, so that, not because we were looking to take ownership of anything, because we want to improve it. It's in the center of our town, it's a centerpiece, all right, it's the first impression many people get of our town, all right? So, we, we need to do these things, all right? We had an election yesterday, I'm sure everyone's aware of what the results were, and we have fine people serving, we have three fine people coming into office, all right, and I hope that the influence of the new people, all right, will have an influence of some of the folks who have been there, and we can move some of these things forward, and we can continue to improve this town. You didn't elect any of us to sit here and to be quiet and to be conservative to, to assure reelection at the next cycle, all right? That's not why we're here. We're here to represent you, we're not here to be disrespectful, we're not here to hide anything from you, and we're here to work with everyone we can work with to make this town the best it could be, because I don't think any of us here are looking to go anywhere. So, that's my position, and I know many of the commissioners, not all the commissioners, agree with that position, but we need to come up with smarter answers and better options to address the problems that we have. Thank you, Mayor.
Just on the referendum, no, no secret, I supported the referendum, but that was the only option out there, and so we needed to address the overcrowding issue, and I supported it. I do believe that the people spoken twice now, so we need a different approach.
Different approach, absolutely.
So, so just since we're all commenting on it, I will. One, just what the mayor said, and what everybody has talked about, the public has come forth and said, "You're putting for this in front of us twice, we don't like it." So, to try and put it in front of them again, wouldn't, wouldn't be wise. So, the Einstein said, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting the outcome to be different." I think twice is enough to know the outcome won't be different, right? It does, to, to your point, ma'am, is give an opportunity to look at the situation and actually, as Commissioner Petracco said, look at solutions, right? The, excuse me, Carmen, so the things that I think are important to keep in mind is the, the notion that the schools are overcrowded, and to suggest that the overcrowding is exclusively attributed to new apartments in town, I think is misleading. I think there's an opportunity now, without the referendum on the table, is actually to do a, have a thoughtful discussion around what actually is causing the overcrowding in the schools. When you look at the fact that in 2007, the school system, I believe 2007, changed half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten, using the same infrastructure, the same classrooms, meant there was less classrooms available for other uses, because now they were available for kindergarten students all day versus part-day. At the request of residents who said, "Hey, it's a hardship on us to figure out, what do I do with my child for a half a day? It's very expensive to do that, and we're trying to make a living." So, the school system responded to that and went to full day. There's nothing that we, at the local level, will ever be able to do about changing unfunded federal mandates around a range of things, including special needs children. The occupancy of our classrooms for special needs children is about 17% of the population. The classroom that can handle 20 kids, 30 kids, all right, which historically, and when I was there, handled over 35 kids, by federal law can now only have X number of kids in there, and needs a teacher and a special needs teacher, and those numbers are generally less than 10. So, in order to make sure that you're using classroom space, which is commingled, so sometimes it's separate, sometimes it's together, right, that we have to figure out, that says, how do we now figure out how to do something with our infrastructure, because the existing infrastructure can no longer stretch to absorb that? And those laws aren't changing. One that doesn't get addressed enough is the complexity of school curricula. When I was in school, what we knew had been science about the solar system was that Pluto was a small planet on the end, was the little one, it was called the junior planet. Today, children are learning so much more about science and math and English as an integrated curriculum, that the certification requirements on a teacher and the complexity of curricula has changed, that basically says, "I need smaller classroom size and more contact time as a teacher with, with those students." Again, when you have, even with the existing population, you're saying, under, under the same number of classrooms, "I want to put fewer kids in each room," which means simply is, same population, fewer kids in each room, special needs limitations, there's not enough classrooms to make the space work. It has to be addressed. The question is how? And I think what we've all learned is that the solution that says simply, "We want to build more bricks and mortar to expand the space," at the prices that are, that it costs today, is something that the residents of the township have said no to. I have raised with the state a question, that given the advancements in technology and child development, I was chief learning officer for my firm for many years, and I raised the question that says, as an option to what Commissioner Petracco raised, that says, "If we are able to advance the use of technology and use the computer more to help children learn and meet their development requirements, how would we change the use of classroom space? Would we need, for example, not 20 small classrooms, but maybe we might need five larger rooms that are technologically outfitted to address the needs of those students? And do it in a way that's very productive and basically drive to a greater immersive learning." The state has not considered yet, State Board of Education has not considered yet, what the impact is of today's technology on the development of students, and they are still mandating traditional classroom structures and infrastructure. So, there's a gap. So, and, and so one of the things that we have now as a town to look at and actually think about is what can be done in the short term, so that there might be a better solution coming up in a few years that could help us address the long-term needs of our infrastructure. Because the worst thing that we want, would want to have happen is 10 years from now, turn the annex building that's being proposed by the school into self-storage, because technology has advanced and the child, and child requirements have changed. There's so much that's out there around child development and technology that hasn't been explored yet, that would create significant changes in educational options that needs to be explored, and I think we have to pursue that very vigorously with the Board of Education, as well as with the State Board of Education, to advance a proposition of a different solution.
I have to tell you, Commissioner Evans, I think you're spot-on with the future, and, you know, we take these bonds, and when you talk about technology and how they're going to be teaching 20 years from now, just like I never thought there'd be online courses for college students, and, you know, when you approve a referendum, start changing these buildings around, and you're bonding that money over 20 years or however long they're going for, 20 years from now, just like I never thought there'd be driverless cars, oh, guess what? You're talking about truck drivers being out of work because of that technology, and I think it's a big investment. I, I've heard a lot of voices on this, you know, people that could afford to pay their taxes and support the children, and I think having children go through this Nutley school system, I'm very pro-child in education, but if you don't have the money, and you're going to be forced to move out of your town, especially you're seeing your citizens in here, because you can't afford it, you know, and, and not to, and I understand your point, and I have kids, but my thing is, you know, up here, I think we have to strike a balance where it affects everyone in a positive way, not just that the seniors are getting priced here, not that our kids aren't getting the proper education, but Tom, I just want to commend you, because I think that the way they're going to be teaching 20 years from now is going to be very different to the way they're teaching today.
Content of the employee handbook, I just got mine tonight, so I really can't comment. Mr. Janet Tempo?
Mr. Mayor, there's a significant provision regarding conflicts of interest and ethics. There's also a nepotism policy in, in personnel policy procedure manual, to answer that direct question.
Thank you. Was brought up about the affordable housing and-
I can answer that, too, if you want.
What happens in 2025?
I can answer that, Mr. Mayor. Our, our settlement with COE will take us to that year. Nobody really knows what's going to happen in 2025, what the group requirements will be. We still have a need, according to the law, but we expect the legislature to take action, or at least the court at some point, so we have no idea, knowing what our obligation may be in 2025. There could be no, there could be no obligation, or there could be an obligation, we, we just don't know.
And then, Ms. Russell, yes, about the trucks behind Chickolini. There are two trucks and a food truck that park behind Chickolini's. They had existing agreements with Mr. Chickolini that we have honored, and once there's a deposition, deposition of the Chickolini property, I'm sure they'll be gone. And the only thing else I want to say is that, you know, here on the board, we try to be respectful of everybody, we try to be attentive to everybody, sometimes our motions get the best of us, and I apologize for anything that any of us do up here that people take offense to, and that's all I have tonight.
Hi, Amy Salanto, 70 Newman Avenue. I understand you consolidated some. I do also want to say that this format requires anyone watching the recorded video to watch all of the questions and all of the answers. So, in terms of transparency, and we'll call it Open Public Meetings Act, you do, I believe, according to the act, have the right to set the definition for open public comment. You didn't do that in advance of this evening, a matter of fact, you changed the format midway through the meeting, and you've created a situation where people are now obligated to watch quite a lengthy video and to try to tie back each question to each answer. So, I just want to say that, and my two questions, which I feel were not answered, is regarding the MECA investigation. I specifically asked about our town prosecutor's involvement, because there are violations to statutes. I understand that in the addition of 18 basement apartments at the East Center Street property, that it's been previously mentioned by Commissioner Evans, that there were permits issued. In terms of the apartments that supposedly were converted after the fact, according to what Pat Intandola said at the February joint meeting between all of the aforementioned boards that I've mentioned already, he said, "Oh, those must have been converted after certificates, certificates of occupancy were issued." He said that to me, I was sitting right behind him, he turned and asked me what buildings I was talking about. I can't verify if those apartments were converted into two-bedroom. All I know is that I toured those apartments, and they sure as heck didn't look converted. They looked to be built to specifications. Either way, the developer broke the law on multiple apartments, and he is subject to fines. Any of us who break the law are issued summonses, we might be arrested, we are given our day in court. So, I am asking why, for those specific apartments, there have been no charges filed through our municipality's prosecutor's office? I asked that question, and I would like an answer. That's my first question that wasn't answered.
May I address that briefly?
Sure.
I, I did, I have just to ask with counsel.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I just had to ask counsel a question before I answered, tried to answer your question to the extent that I'm able to answer it, okay? Because I'm being guided by, by, by legal counsel as to what I can say. I have talked about this at previous meetings regarding the conversion of, of an apartment that had, was supposed to have one bedroom versus two. Specifically to your question, when that occurs, the violation, the nature of that permit violation, because that's what it is, it's a permit violation, it permits that one bedroom, they put in two, those specific violations are actually covered under the Uniform Construction Code, violation section.
Yes.
Those violation notices are issued through the construction office, and in the event the person does not correct the violation, a summons would be issued, and then they would have to go before the municipal court, which would involve the court system and the prosecutor. So, as Mr. Janet Tempo said tonight, a, a letter was issued to the, to the owner, which included all of the violations and the things that have to be addressed. We're waiting for his attorney to respond to what action he's going to take, right? We are not asking for what would be the traditional fine under the Uniform Construction Code. A permit violation under the Uniform Construction Code simply says that for each violation, the fine is $2,000.
Per day?
No, that's not the construction code.
Okay, I've, I've actually read that, and I will ask that that be published or provided.
It's, it's, it's the, it's actually-
If it's truly separate, if construction code is truly separate-
Absolutely.
-from the statute that addresses a violation.
You're referring to two things, and I want to clarify that. The Uniform Construction Code has provision, provisions in it, it's the state Uniform Construction Code which is followed. What you're referring to is a local zoning ordinance, which includes a violation which could become a daily violation.
Okay, so why wouldn't a local ordinance be applied in a municipality?
So, I'm answering your question, is a letter has been issued-
So I'm answering your question, is a letter has been issued to the owner of that property listing all of those violations, and there is going to be a sit-down to address that, and there will be a discussion of a course of action once his attorney responds to us as to his response to those violations.
So I appreciate that, and I understand you don't want to back and forth, but I will say this, we were told in June that a letter had been issued. No, I'm sorry, it is, it is November.
I want to answer your question, okay? Your question presupposes that these are criminal violations, they're not. They're violations-
They're violations.
Let me finish. The, there were violations issued regarding the two bedrooms that were converted originally. Those, those, those violation notices were submitted. Because this is a much bigger issue than a normal zoning violation, you know, most of the time it's, we find out an apartment in the basement or something and we issue it. It ends up at the municipal court, and it's resolved by way of compliance, okay? So in effect, we're really doing the same thing but on a much larger scale. I don't want to get into the details because I've had private conversations with you, Ms. Solento, on it, and I've tried to answer your questions as best I can, but it is a potential litigation matter, and whether it ends up in court or in a resolution, trust me, we are handling it in a very serious manner. The conversion of the twos back to ones will be required, and they've already started. And so, you know, it's not, it's not a normal case, and therefore, it's not, it's, it's being handled like it but on a much larger scale. So I, I, I just wanted to be clear, and I didn't say you, that you were saying it, but I think there's an implication that somehow this is a criminal matter, and it's not. It's, it's, it could be a violation of the Uniform Construction Code of our township ordinance that we are enforcing. And I think if ultimately it gets resolved, everyone will have an opportunity to comment on it, but that's what we're trying to do. So-
And I appreciate this.
It's not being hidden, it's not going to not be addressed, it's going to be addressed very seriously, and we're trying to do that. But there are due process issues that we are trying to comply with.
And I understand, and I'm not implying it's being hidden, and when you say that you've had private conversations with me, we have, however, you're implying that you've told me something that I'm not either believing or that I'm asking about. So I want to say this-
I'm not implying that at all, I'm just, I'm just trying to say that we've had conversations.
We have, and thank you, because I ask about it regularly.
I know, and I appreciate that, and we know that you're the ones that helped us find out about it, and I appreciate that, and I'm just trying to be, at least have a dialogue with you and explain what's happening to the best. Look, I'm the township attorney, I have obligations to my Commissioners and to the town regarding these legal matters.
And to the citizens.
And I'm not going to just tell people because they want to hear the answer. I need to handle it in the proper way.
And I understand that.
And I will continue to do that, but I just want it to be clear, and I'm not saying that you said it, I'm just saying there is maybe an implication that it's criminal, and it's not.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
We will address it, I promise you.
So we are in the sixth month since the first letter was sent to the developer.
But Ms. Solento, does it matter as long as we get it right? Did you want us to do-
I'm not sure if it matters.
-a half-hour investigation? We're trying to get to the very bottom of it so that we can fix it permanently.
Okay.
And I don't think time is a function here.
Okay.
It's doing it right is the most important thing, and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, and I appreciate being corrected in terms of that it's a construction code versus a local zoning ordinance. Thank you very much, I stand corrected. Since they've already started converting the apartments back, are there construction permits that have been issued?
Yes, they have to come in and they have to provide drawings.
Right, but have, have they been issued?
One so far has been issued.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe another one's coming online.
So they're in the process, and they ostensibly have removed their tenants, so there, they've lost some revenue, which I consider probably just about one of the only fines we've extracted to date because of the process. And I'm just going to say that, because the citizens have been cheated. Additionally-
Ms. Solento.
Yes.
Public comment's over.
Okay, but you, you didn't answer my question about the Chickolini Building. Topology was hired, I believe, about two years ago, and it was mentioned tonight that when you get the report, now, in terms of hiring consultants, vendors, et cetera, there needs to be a timeline, a start and an end date. A specific contract for a report needs to have a delivery date, and it's shocking that there has been no delivery date for that report.
The only thing I could say to that is there was, there was litigation pending and is still not been resolved.
About, wait, about the Chickolini Building?
Just let me finish.
I'm sorry, I'm asking you, was it pending about the Chickolini Building?
That prevented that from going forward, and I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay, so that litigation has been completed?
Not yet.
Okay, so I appreciate being given the opportunity to ask questions or to confirm that I felt two questions weren't answered. I want to say this, I leave you all with a question. Who do you consider to be the town's shareholders? And I'm not asking you to answer that, now I understand the open public comment section is closed. But it was mentioned tonight by Mrs. Boza that it seems like sometimes there's not a clarity that the taxpayers, the people who own property in Nutley are shareholders. And if you were a public corporation, you would be expected to deliver a return on investment. I'm not saying that none of you are making that effort, I'm just saying that it seems like sometimes the developers become the shareholders, even when they don't live in Nutley. Yes, they've bought property and they're developing it. For many years, Hoffman LaRoche drove the town, and we were just grateful that they paid their $10 million. We gave them all sorts of tax breaks, they never let up on the tax breaks they looked for, they negotiated long-term tax breaks, and then they left. And instead of delivering on what they agreed to for those long-term tax breaks, they tore buildings down. So we cannot be at the mercy of developers, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Tucci? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And the time is 10:15.